I didn't, I didn't get the phone.
Is that here?
Yeah.
I don't have it right here.
Yes. So you're like, two hundred, seven hundred here. And then it'd be extra. So I want to ask you.
I love Afghanistan.
All right, let me shut this up. Way down here. So if there's a way to.
All right, we're on five.
Marion, do your public service and utilities before.
Thanks.
You're sorry, baby.
Carl, finance to order. EFS grant for engineering planning for ALCO and Seeker. Mr. Poulster.
This is actually the two resolutions that we're asking the council to pass. The first one is to be authorizing the mayor to accept a $50,000 grant for the study that's already been approved by the council for how to fix the ALCO in its very sewerhole by ALCO. And then the other one, part of that, in order for us to accept that grant, we need a resolution saying that that study is not subject to Seeker, which it wouldn't be because they're not actually doing anything to just study and how to fix an issue.
I should read ALCO regulator, actually. No. It's ALCO regulator.
ALCO regulator, what is an ALCO regulator?
It's our valve, has nothing to do with the site, it's our valve that's in the site.
Okay. Any questions? Anyone familiar with what we're doing?
I'll move it.
Move it. John?
Yeah, I'm just down.
I will second it. All in favor? Aye.
So we've.
We do two at the same time on that one?
There'll be two separate resolutions.
Right, one is the Seeker, right?
Yeah, and the other's accepting.
Accepting the grant.
Okay, I'll move that.
Second, all in favor? Aye. So we're good. Anything to come before finance that I have not addressed?
Okay, move, we adjourn.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye. Ms. Porterfield, I'm going to have you do public service and utilities because staff has some other commitments, so.
Okay. Call for order of public service and utilities. Engineering services for North Ferry Street Pump Station, please, Mr. LeBong.
Evening. As you're all aware, back when Irene came, we had some devastating damages to the North Ferry Street Pump Station. And what we have done is we solicited RFPs from consulting firms to do the design and bidding services for the reconstruction of the North Ferry Street Pump Station. We received, I believe it was six, six bidders. And we're recommending that we take the lowest responsible bid, and that would be to MJ Engineering for $175,800 for the design reconstruction of the North Ferry Street Pump Station.
Might want to point out that they have done some prior work.
Yeah, MJ Engineering has done a number of jobs here in the city, including the Edison Avenue Source after Irene. They currently did the Weaver Street Storm Sanitary, including the, some of the ALCO after Irene damages.
We've applied for reimbursement from FEMA. We did, we were initially declined. We have.
An appeal letter in.
An appeal letter in, and we're looking for reconsideration from FEMA for that facility.
100% reimbursement is what you're seeking?
FEMA is.
We'll be responsible for.
Usually 75, and the state does 12 and 1/2, and then we're responsible, but they won't leave some of that as a last barrier.
And we've also applied for some other opportunities to cover the design portion of this too. We don't know if it's been approved yet, but it's been applied for.
So absent getting any reimbursement then, this is the cost of bidding?
Yes, and that money is budgeted in 2014 capital.
It is budgeted.
Yes.
Other questions, Ms. Perez?
So, looking at the different bids, the bidders two through six seem to be relatively closely packed, I guess, compared to the first one. Is there any idea why we had five of them that are all in the same ballpark, and then one guy that's kind of in a different ballpark? Is there maybe, did everybody understand?
I don't consider five in the ballpark, because they're one and two close, and four are way out, or the fifth, or the sixth one way out, but.
But they're all three, three.
One and two are fairly close.
One and three.
One and three.
Very close.
Statistically, I think there's, you could say that there's a significant gap between one and the rest of the pack. Number three would be the next lowest, but still considerable chunk of money away. So are we confident that everyone had?
We never had any problems with MJ Engineering.
Are we confident that everyone's understood?
Yeah, we asked, we actually did a.
We brought three firms in for interviews.
For second interviews. Which firms were those?
We brought in MJ Engineering, Barton and the Judas, and fellow engineering.
And I sat in on two of the three interviews, and no, they very specifically asked the company about the.
That they were comfortable with it.
They were comfortable with it.
She brought in the highest bid, the lowest bid.
The medium bid.
And a medium bid. So the second lowest bid.
We actually evaluated.
Second, third, and fourth lowest bids you did, you just went, okay.
We actually evaluated the respondents without looking at their price, and the companies that we brought in were the top three that we had selected. So I evaluated them, and then those were the top three. Then we opened up the pricing ladder, saw the difference in price, brought them in for second interviews, talked to them about, you know, why they did what they did, what they, how they felt, where they felt the challenges were in the project, and had 45-minute conversations with all three, and then decided that we felt that MJ was comfortable with their price, they're a competent firm, significantly less, and therefore that's what we would recommend.
Okay, just, out of those three, interestingly enough, I mean, one, the first bidder was 175,000, the other two people that came in were 330 and 420, so it's just such a large gap. Usually if we're outbidding for the same thing, I would expect a closer, closer connection of bidder, so it's.
Yes, again, the price.
Well, an indicator of a misunderstanding somewhere along the way is from my experience, but.
And that's why we did bring them in and ask them if they were comfortable with their price, and they said yes, very.
And their feeling seemed to be, and correct me if I'm wrong, that because they had done some recent work there, they, it was going to take them less time to.
They did a lot of the mapping and previous studies in the Front Street ALCO area, so.
More familiar with this like that?
They're a little bit familiar with this.
We discussed the different, our concerns, what we felt was pertinent to that project, their take on that. They're all aware of every component that we have concerns with, and they were comfortable with their price.
Okay.
So if they had said during our interview, we didn't know you wanted to do that, or we misunderstood that, or whatever, but they're a good firm, they take these things seriously, we've done pretty good work with them in the past.
And this is a replacement of that structure? The old building and other historic group is kind of concerned with?
Well, we're not going to demo that building by any means, we would take the components out of it, and.
And we're looking for reuse of that building, so maybe a meeting place, or sometimes reuse.
It won't be floodgave.
It won't be existing. Right, it won't be floodgave, but at least we're not, we have no intention of knocking it down.
And so the equipment would move uphill.
Yeah, the pumps, we reuse the pumps, they were just put in about six years ago, so we could value engineer the project, reutilize those pumps, add an additional pump, because obviously if you sequence these things in, you never shut that down.
Right.
It's probably one of, if not the most critical piece of infrastructure that we have in our recent water collections.
Service is about 30,000 homes, including parts of it.
When we got there in the morning, and Irene, with Irene, after we left the wellfields, and that thing wasn't running, that was not, not a good time in my life.
It'll bring to an elevation of about 235 to 237 elevation-wise, so you should be good for the 500 year.
That's out of the 500 layer. What about the 600 year?
Might have to come back.
All right.
Other questions? Just one other question, you said that it's in the budget, how much should we budget for that?
Total on the budget right now, we have roughly a little over $3 million, including construction.
No, but we have a budget in a million.
Yeah, well, no, we had budgeted a million a year ago, and this year we put 2.4 more, so we have about 3.4 total in that budget, that lineup. That'll help the construction.
Well, this is just engineering?
This is just engineering, yes.
Any other questions? Okay, on the same motion? All in favor?
Aye.
The next one is the water source and water treatment plant protection.
Again, as a result of Irene, the water well field came very close to being flooded as part of the mitigation plan and protection plan. They had recommended in 2013 to put in a berm protecting the wellfields. That money has been appropriated in the 2014 capital, and this is to award the construction of that berm to Allen Potts Construction, as the most responsible little bidder. We had a group of six bids for that also. And there should be a letter in there from Popper Associates recommending the award to.
Potts.
Allen Potts Construction.
And again, this firm has done work for us in the past as well, correct?
Yeah, there's no work done, we're just working the plant and at the well well.
But there you go.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Is there anything else to come before public service? Oh, yes, there's a space there. Yes. Are the chip funding, Mr. Olson?
Mr. Crusoe is here to represent our engineer. What we're talking about tonight is the award of our heating contract for the year, as well as our chips funding and the hot in place asphalt recycling.
I don't know if you saw the packets, we have, we're piggybacking with the county once again on the hot recycling. They went to bid back on February 25th, so we're going to piggyback on their contract using prices. And then we went to bid on the 16th of April for our paving. We did a little, we switched up a little bit. In the past, we had to wait for funding. This year we didn't have to, we had general funds, we had chips, it's passed, and we had CPG money, so we were able to put the packet, more stream line, work the pack, and we got better pricing this year. So we had four bidders, the bidder that has the apparent low was Empire, and that was 1,763.
All four bids were within $80,000, which was pretty, pretty amazing.
They were pretty tight.
We don't usually get that type of bid.
I think the way you've bid it out, it seemed to be effective.
Well, in the past, because of the way that the funding is, we can't award, it's awarded to us, I mean, we can't.
To the money improvement, yeah.
Right, so it's, until that happens, so we have to break it up, so that as it comes available, then we're awarding it. But this year everything came together, so we got a better, you know, better pricing.
We did get more chips funded than normal, so we're very pleased.
250,000.
The state gave us more money in chips, which is, last year they gave us a little more than the year before that, this year significantly more, so that enables us to pay for them, so we're pleased with that as well. We're lucky in that, we may actually be able to do Albany Street from Brandywine all the way to Charles, to Charles Street, which if you travel Albany Street, that's a pretty rough road, so we're, with that additional ones, that's what we intend to do with that. And I couldn't think of a better place to put it. We put a lot of, a lot of patch material in there in the past couple of weeks, so.
Somebody, I'm trying to think, a while back someone was talking about Knott Street, and I know there was some underground work that needed to be done, is, was that the one that was in consideration for this year, or?
Well, Knott Street, we have, we have the Glessey Building, it's being, I believe it's going to be torn down.
Okay.
Before we do any work in that area, we want to wait till they were done doing any, you know, appropriate work as far as utilities and water lines and stuff, so until that's gone, we don't want to go in there and, you know, have them rip up the random road.
Yeah, I know, like, a lot of the areas, it's a pretty busy street, the curbs are missing in some areas.
We're looking at, right, we're looking, basically from Divine to Van Vanken. The covered side has good curb and sidewalk, and we're looking at, it would be the north side of Knott Street, from Divine up.
Which is a little, if you go through there, is a little rough.
Yeah, there's a missing curb in a lot of areas.
It's a sleeve, red state curb.
Is that the quarter mile that Mr. Wall was talking about that we're going to be doing in the curves?
No, we're finishing up Carey Street and doing Hattie, and there's a section over by the, it's got the little league, the tennis courts, we're doing a spot around tennis courts, finishing up the curb there, or sidewalk there, so that's the areas that we're looking at.
Just the very last page of your, of the bids there, when you talk about the contracts you give price for the following, there's an order by the engineer.
Yeah.
And I forgot, that was the other reason I wanted to talk. The last three pieces there, the hydrant extensions for bidder number four, I just tell myself those numbers are way out of whack, is that, are those just typos, or is that, again, bidder number four was the person who won, so for a six inch hydrant extension, we're talking about $260,000 possibly? $238,000, $404,000, that's going to be, those numbers have to be incorrect.
Those are typos.
That's what I was hoping you were going to tell me. I'm thinking, that's why he bid low, I'll get bid low and get the contract, and I'll get you on the extras.
We don't really use them a lot, just in case if we need something, they're in there. A lot of times we don't really use them, but.
We do our own. Okay, so you can assure us that those are, those numbers are correct?
Yeah, those are a little off, you have to check that again, but those, those are.
We have the capability of doing our own hydrant extensions anyway, so. Very good. Even if it wasn't off, we certainly would not go there, no, I can assure you.
Are there any other questions?
No, thank you.
On the same motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Ms. A.D.A.C., 2004 paving program to Empire paving?
Yeah, I think that should take care of all three others.
Oh, this one's, that's everything there? Okay.
Yeah, because the other was, the other was piggybacking on the county's hot in place asphalt recycling, and then we would discuss the additional securities.
Carl, can they move all three under one, or do them separately?
Yeah.
So numbers three, four, and five should be moved separately?
You could move them all at the same right now, but it's along to be separate resolutions when the meeting on Monday.
So explain it also, should we move each one individually? We did three, they're listed as four, so.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number five?
Five.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Is there anything else to come before public service?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, I'll call to order city development and planning. The item of the planning board, the zoning changes for ALCO.
This would just be a resolution from the city council requesting that the planning board to review whatever changes may be necessary to accommodate casino at the ALCO location. Technically, the request is supposed to come from the city council, asking them to review that, and they're going to come back to the council with their review, that the council can then accept, reject, or modify. This is just kind of the formal beginning of the process.
Questions? So this is specifically for the casino?
Yes, well, it is not saying that it's going to be a casino, it's just because of the timeframe for the casino, they've got to have, I think it's June 30th that the application has to be in, and then there are certain times where the payments have to be made to the state when we're awarded, so this is just being proactive to make sure that we get everything done as quickly as possible, where if it were to happen, then we've kind of done our homework, so we're as ready to go as we could be at that point. The planning board has already scheduled a special meeting on the first Thursday of May, I think it's May 8th, to discuss this issue, this issue in anticipation of the council meeting, Mr. President.
Okay, other questions?
I'll move it.
Okay, second? Nope, okay, I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Ceremonial resolution, Ms. Prazo.
Well, I have happy news and sad news. This was to mark the 72nd anniversary of a couple that has had a lot of impact on the community, but they don't feel they'll be up to coming out. Their daughter just emailed me today, so we can, maybe the mayor can send them, you know, recognition.
Proclamation.
Whatever, but 72 years is no joke, and they look like they're still happy to be with each other.
That's good.
So we wish them all the best and a very happy anniversary, but we can take that off.
Okay. And we're going to hold on the land bank, so, hold that for two weeks.
Well, that one, just because the property's already in service now, so there's going to be a CERO meeting before the council meeting next week to transfer from CERO to the land bank.
Oh, okay.
That's approved.
Okay, good. Price Chopper, the economic strengths presentation, do you want to speak to that?
Sure, just a quick update, the monthly presentation for the economic strengths for this coming month will be Price Chopper, and we're fortunate to have Mona Golub's going to be coming in to do that presentation, so we're looking forward to that.
Okay, thank you. Summer night, the open container waiver. We need to.
Well, looking at that, that's actually, I know recently the council has been passing those, based on our code, it's not actually a requirement to come to the council, so we could pull that off and just do it the way that it's listed in our code.
Good. All right, and then the local law renaming portions of Norwood Avenue, we have the public hearing, so that will just be, I guess, well, I guess we need somebody to move that. Okay? All right, second, Ms. Prazo?
Yes, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Start this discussion on this community development block grant. Anybody have any initial thoughts at this point of either things that you would like to fund or possibly not fund? You know, I've been out of town, so we haven't, you know, haven't had any individual conversations with anybody. Ms. Prazo?
I would like to send some recommendations to me to even.
Okay. That's fine. Ms. Porterfield?
I'd like to know from, I guess, Mr. Perga, that any lines that got increased, based what were the outcomes that, that felt that they should get an increase? What were their improvements in service?
From the prior year.
From the prior year. And if you have that question.
Which, which are you referring to specifically?
Anyone that got increased.
If you could. Okay.
Well, I can, well, the first thing.
I mean, without, without going down the list.
I mean, if you're not ready now, you can do.
I could do an email or, or whatever, I'd be glad to.
I know that question caught you off guard, but.
Little bit, that's all right. I can address it.
It's something, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely, I'd be glad to. At a later date.
Any other information that you want from Mr. Perga at this point?
I'll send you my recommendations as well, I think, you know, I'd like to see some other priorities, but I'll let you know.
Okay.
When do we need to vote on this?
It'd be May 12.
May 12, okay, so we have two cycles, right?
Is this something that, because the negotiating process would be in executive session ordinarily, or? No.
Generally not.
No. Okay, that's fine, thank you.
Okay, so again, you start sending me your ideas, and we'll get them out to everybody, and we'll continue some dialogue.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Rezoning 1090, 1102 Crane Street property.
This is just a, the planning commission has already heard this, it's a bowling, a former bowling alley on Crane Street, the zoning was changed with the council plan to residential, and since then, there's been a number of changes, changes of ownership, changes of potential use, which always requires use variances, and the applicant has basically requested that it be changed to commercial, which, given the type of the building and the uses of the building, makes sense. Planning commission has already had a, made a recommendation to the city council that this be changed, so we need to be a call for, call for public hearing, public hearing and changing, and obviously Seeker with that as well.
Questions? Okay, on the entertain a motion then to call for the public hearing? Okay, Ms. Prazo, second by Ms. Porterfield, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, if there's nothing else to go before city development and planning, I'll entertain a motion.
I did send an email regarding the ceremony resolution, I don't know if anyone else was able to get it.
I had a very awful trip back today, so I haven't even been home yet.
There was a request for, it's a ceremony for two deacons from Mount Alberta Church, and they are asking for it to happen at the city council meeting. But for their service to the community, something that could be presented, the dinner that's being given for that.
Okay. Deacon Holmes and Deacon Fraser?
Correct.
Okay, all right, they're moved, second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, again, anything else to come before city development and planning, I'll entertain a motion.
I did send an email regarding the ceremony resolution, I don't know if anyone else was able to get it.
I had a very awful trip back today, so I haven't even been home yet.
There was a request for, it's a ceremony for two deacons from Mount Alberta Church, and they are asking for it to happen at the city council meeting. But for their service to the community, something that could be presented, the dinner that's being given for that.
Okay. Deacon Holmes and Deacon Fraser?
Correct.
Okay, all right, they're moved, second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, again, anything else to come before city development and planning? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn? Okay, move, second, all in favor?
Aye.
I will call to order government operations, discussion regarding moratorium on convenience stores, Mr. Poulster.
There was a public hearing last Monday, I don't believe anyone spoke on it, so, no one said that we, no action required on here, to my discussion with Mr. Poulster today. I'm going to be asking that the council approve a resolution next week for a four-month moratorium on convenience stores, that would give us time to study the issue a little bit, to compile a more precise plan, and how do you want to forward this?
That's just discussion.
And essentially, no one can submit a request, planning zone to convenience store anywhere in the city.
Yeah, I think officially what we go about would be that the city would be issuing any certificates of use for new stores of that type. So in theory, they could still, who voted, planning, don't commit forward, and things like that, in case they really want to be ready to go, or if the four months is over, but they wouldn't be able to get any of the city to operate.
Mr. Palmer was just clarifying that we have not had the public hearing yet, it's going to be this, this coming Monday.
Does that explain why no one spoke?
Okay, so then we do not have any action required.
We're just calling for a public hearing now.
And we've already called for a public hearing.
So it's a call, but we have the public hearing, just a reminder that we're going to have the public hearing.
We already called for the public hearing.
So I think that's why we put on the agenda, so that we alert everybody that it's going to be a public hearing.
Well, it's also good, just so the public knows, that the moratorium is for a four month period, so that's a little more clarification for the public hearing. Yes, Mr. P.
What's the definition of a convenience store? I think I know of it. Is that going to get a little bit of gray area if somebody wants to open a store to sell a certain item? Is that going to be called a convenience store? Is that a convenience store has to sell milk, bread, eggs, tobacco products? Because we're, we're telling people they can't open a store, basically, and the city is connected, so.
I think that's something we'll have to look at, it is a gray area. We've got one for Congress Street right now, it's like, if we start selling food, where do you become a convenience store, and where are you not? So I think that's something we'll have to look at as well for this.
That'll be part of the public hearing discussion, we can talk about definition of a convenience store.
So you'll have, the lines will be ready just before for, for the public to review for the public hearing on what day? Because people are best. of a convenience store.
So, you'll have, the language will be ready just before for the public to review, for the public hearing on what day? Because people are best.
I'll have to check what the resolution was, it's generally a Wednesday before the council meeting and public hearing, so that's this week.
Okay.
Just, so, maybe we talked about this already, but, the purpose for putting a moratorium, so we can take some time to do what? What are we evaluating? Whether we ever want one again, or whether we've got, what's, just the record?
The recognition that a lot of these stores are opening up, that they're opening up in the same areas around each other, like the many on Eastern Avenue, and that decreases the quality of life in those certain neighborhoods, and this is to have some time to put a plan in place to study the issue and to see how to address it.
And, back to our original conversation, to put in, in place maybe a number of feet or a number of, you know, yards.
Distance between them.
Distance between, yes.
It's good to know, because I think this is all, when we want people to come and speak next time, we want to be prepared with the right, kind of, questions based on what we're trying to do, so.
Right. So, it's, it's, a lot of department recognizes that our code isn't as defined as it should be to kind of regulate, like, those four and two blocks, so.
Right, okay, sounds good.
Okay, very good, nothing to do there, but we have to call for a public hearing for change request, inspection request for certain inspections. There's something uncreed.
Not vague at all. Actually, you should have Councilman Lou Berar's name next to it, I know he's not here today to speak on the subject, but if it was something you wanted to bring to the committee, so maybe we can hold that until.
So, we need to hold that for two weeks? Yes? Okay? Any other business to come before government operations today? Ask for motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Hey, council ordered health and recreation, opinions for front street pool, Mr. Folster?
We've seen some of the different swimming pools, which are mostly operated by the Boys and Girls Club, the front street pool is operated by the YWCA, it's the front street pool, it's gonna be the same, they're all gonna be the same terms and conditions, the only difference between all four of them is, the Central Park Pool is gonna be for $4,000 more than it was last year, and that's based on some new activities, based on the new diamonds, park area, the Boys and Girls Club's gonna have a traditional person there, it's gonna run some activities, I know Carlson can give a more detailed description of that, but this is, it's the same thing.
Yeah, same terms and conditions, and, that we've had for the past number of years for the pools. Boys and Girls Club has done a wonderful job of operating the Quack and Bush, the Hillhurst, and the Central Park Pool with lifeguards and programmed activities for youth. We want to extend that agreement for the Central Park program to also include a little bit of work that they're gonna do for some of its diamonds, we've met with them, they're gonna be the coordinator of some activities that are gonna occur up there between Sickom, Boys and Girls Club, and as well as some other organization, neighborhood organization, so that somebody can monitor what the goings-on at the new facility that we just put a significant amount of money into, thanks to the state of New York and Scanty County Legislature, which helped us immensely on that project, but we wanna make sure that that facility can be utilized by as many groups as possible in a way that keeps people safe and keeps the facility intact.
Mr. Erickson?
So, that $4,000 you're talking about, is that for which, which one?
That is for diamonds, but it's going to be tacked on to the cost of the Central Park Pool.
The Central Park Pool, okay. You know, is that, in the CDPG grant stuff that we're going through, is that one of the items in there? So, we vote on this before we vote on the CDPG, we kinda just bend ourselves in the corner, right?
Well, that's if you, if you agree that that's a good way of spending $4,000.
Oh, yes. I was just gonna say, I think that Boys and Girls Club has done an amazing job with the pools, I mean, they went from being quite troublesome to being well under control, and, you know, went from where we had people making trouble in, in Hillhurst, being kicked out, they get on the bike, they go to Quack and Bush, they, you know, they make trouble there, they get kicked out, you know, now it's like, they have IDs, they communicate with one another, if somebody's asked to leave for the day, they're asked to leave for the day, I mean, it's just, I fully support, yes, all the agreements, I think they've done a great job.
They really have, this, I think they're doing us bigger favor than we're doing for them by all means with this.
I understand, too.
It's, yeah, it's not a lot of money, they already have individuals that are in place that can manage these people, so to have this person there is really going to assist not only their program that the Boys and Girls Club utilizes, but also the Scanty Youth Program, Sickom's Program, the Neighborhood Association, and a number of other activities that we would like to have take place in that park. It, that park could really act as a, account of a lot more than it has for us. I mean, it, it's accessible to a lot of our kids in the city that wouldn't have had those opportunities without the renovation. The renovation went very well, it's completed, we wanna be able to open it up to the different organizations to be able, again, provide that programmed activity rather than an open free-for-all.
So, the additional $4,000 would cover the Boys and Girls Club only, wouldn't, those other organizations, there's no funding allocation?
No funding allocation is required for them, just, again, this, this $4,000 is for the Boys and Girls Clubs, so they can monitor the activities at, at the park and keep things functional in an organized fashion.
The other question was, why aren't they listed in the agreement, as part of the agreement, if they're gonna be diamonds as well? I'm just looking at.
It will, it'll be amendment to the agreement, we just got the paperwork completed, but it'll be, and I can give you all an outline of what they're going to do this week, I could provide that to you, you know, if that's something you'd be interested in.
So, I think the, if I recall correctly, correct me, the $4,000 was for a computer, cellphone, there was like a line in there for like computers, cellphone.
And two individuals.
Internet access, and like, a small, a very small amount was for labor, but it's all a lot of equipment, like, computers and cellphones and stuff.
And money's to pay individuals for the time they're gonna spend there now.
Okay, so, that being a part of the CDPG request, that is kind of new, I'm not sure until we hammer out the CDPG budget, if I'm okay with that $4,000. The rest of it for the pools, I'm okay with, everything we did last year, but if we're gonna add that for, I'm not, I don't know yet, I'm bored with that one particular.
The $4,000 for staffing, for using, fundraising for some of the other equipment that they would, in theory, need.
And there, it says cellphones, computers, I'm the CDPG, I can't guarantee I'm gonna vote for it in the CDPG budget, so that's why I don't know if I would be willing to tack it on here. If we could make it a separate line, then I'd be okay with that.
So, you want to, to stop me to be a separate line?
The, just that $4,000 adder that we didn't have last year, I would like to see that kind of separated, because I, I can't vote on this and then not vote on the CDPG budget, so.
I mean, if that's what you knew, we could do that.
So, but the rest of the pool stuff, I think is great, I think they did a great job, and what we did last year was perfect.
So, just a question for clarification, and we're asking them to add a pool, right? Additional?
It's a park.
It's a park.
Park.
There's a couple, there's a couple of programs that are in the, in the CDPG budget that's, you know, for that park, and so there's a few of them in there. I think these, I'm assuming these four are just the operational pools, the other programs that we are gonna be voting on in four to six weeks are additional programs, additional swimming pool stuff, so.
Okay, so you, I understand, so you wanna vote on, you're okay with the pool?
I'm okay with the pool, good.
But just the additional programming is.
The program that we didn't do last year that we're proposing to do this year is where I'm not ready to vote on it in the budget until we do the CDPG, settle on that, and how are we gonna handle that, right? There's seven of us, and I'm sure we have seven different opinions of how that CDPG is gonna be split up. When we vote on that, then I'm okay with how are we decide as a council to add in the funding into one of these other agreements, so.
Yes.
So, that $4,000 is definitely out of CDPG funding, Carl, is that what you were anticipating for?
Yes, we were planning on, in it, their manager, there were, there were two managers.
Right.
Taxes, fringes, and background checks, administration was going to be total of, they're gonna pay them $12 an hour, that was only $2,100 for the pay, and $375 for the taxes, $500 for the administration, so that $4,000, $2,875 of that was gonna go towards the salaries of those individuals, they have cleaning and building supplies of $250, they have tables and chairs, $375, they have cellphone with 100 minutes is $150, and office supplies, $250, for a total of $4,000.
And, just one more follow-up, and again, I think this all came from, and, Mr. Murray just corrected me wrong, and I know they have met recently with the neighbor associations, with some of the groups, the community groups, that were very concerned about the renovation of the park, it's absolutely beautiful, you guys have not seen the new building, you really gotta go in there, but again, to Mr. Olson's point earlier, we wanna make sure that we don't have vandalism there, the graffiti, the pavilion use, it's a brand new pavilion, pavilion, we're looking to have registration, you know, especially on the weekends, this is really for a weekend program as well. Right, because the funding with the county youth bureau for the Hillhurst and Steiners programs are really Monday through Fridays, so this is gonna be an extension of additional hours in the night and extension of the weekend, where we think that that park is really gonna get some heavy usage, and again, it's really all about vandalism, and, you know, making sure that building is protected to the utmost, because it's absolutely gorgeous, and I think that's really where this, this $4,000 allocation.
And, Mr. Olson, I don't disagree with you, I guess, my whole thing is the.
Oh, yeah, I don't mind submerging.
Committing the money before we vote on it is where I have an objection to the procedure.
Nope, I don't mind submerging, just a little background where that $4,000 was coming from, that's the reason that they're looking to do that, so, I would tend to agree, if that's what we're looking to do.
How would the council be committing the money at this point? This is the entry to the agreement, and if that other funding is there.
Then you have it.
Incorporated under the contract.
Okay, so if we, I mean, I'm learning something here, so if this is in the contract, we are not obligated to spend it?
From CDPG.
Okay. What contract are you looking at?
The four that are listed items, one, two, three, and four.
What is the contract?
We have never invited the contracts, we're asked, we're being asked to move, to vote on contracts we haven't seen yet.
I'm saying it's all conceptual at this point.
Right.
If there's not the money there, we're not, right, we're not doing it.
Right, so when the contracts are drafted, if they're drafted in a way that says, hey, you're gonna operate the pools, and if we get the $4,000, we may choose to do this extra service, then I'm fine with that, if it, if the contract obligates us.
We don't have the money, it won't be in the contract. I don't quite understand that they do.
Because we're gonna sign the contract before we actually go on the CDPG budget. Well, we will, I'm sorry, the council will approve allowing you to sign the contract for these four contracts before the council votes on the CDPG budget, so, it's just really procedurally here, we are authorizing you to enter the contract to spend money that we haven't agreed to allocate to that purpose.
The money's not there, I won't spend it.
We could put wording in the contracts that says, if you don't approve it in the CDP portion, that it'll drop out of the, we'll fund it some other way.
That's fine, that's fine, I'm, I'm okay with that, I mean, really, at the end of the day, when the seven of us decide how we're gonna spend the money.
Yeah, but I, but I think the important part of this is really, the neighborhood association and the north end is really, really behind this 110%, I mean, they have met.
Great, yeah.
Numerous, numerous times, for a good, for almost what we've done at Hillhurst. Now, Hillhurst has, as Ms. Prazzo and I know Mr. Reggie knows, the calls, the vandalism, everything has really decreased since we've had that Boys and Girls Club program up there, and I really think this is very, very important for the north end of the city as well, because again, we've invested a lot of money into that park, and I wanna see utilized, I don't wanna see the pavilion empty, I don't wanna see the building locked up on the weekend because we don't have people to staff it, that is, I think, what the important pieces, and to both points, I understand both, but I really feel comfortable moving it, and again, put that provision in there, if that would satisfy Mr. Erickson, if the $4,000 is in cover, then we will pull it out, but I think it's an important piece for.
It's also important. It's fine, if it's an option that we could add in, but if it contractually obligates us, then I wouldn't be voting. If it's worded, when we go to vote on it, if it's worded that it contractually obligates us, I can't vote for it, so I'm just.
All right. We wanna, it's very important we get these, probably these contracts in place, now, I don't wanna wait until the last minute, it'll be six or seven weeks until we'll be swimming. You'll see down, a couple of items down, you got seven, pipe of chlorine.
Yep.
This is the chlorine for the pools, I didn't wanna wait and, and have this, like, no reason why we can't do this now.
Absolutely, I agree with that.
Can we add that language, then?
Yes.
Yeah.
And remember, the front street pool is different, that's what the YW.
Yes.
That's the YW. That's great.
Yep, and they do a good job as well, YW does a good job.
So, we have four here, so.
I will move that.
Motion on number, on the first one, for the YWCA?
Yeah, sure. I'll move.
Okay, you second?
Uh, Mr. Reggie.
Mr. Reggie.
Mr. Reggie. It's okay. I'll set.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion on the Quack and Bush, please.
I'll move again.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Phil Presley?
I'll move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And, Central Park?
I'll move that.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
All righty.
All right, resolution recognizing Prince Prab, filmmaker. For those of you who may not be familiar with the show, man, he actually works at the City of Schenectady, and he does a class which teaches young people to be filmmakers. He actually, they actually produce, the students, along with him, produce, actually produced a film, which was shown at the product rooms, have been showing, and the actors in it are all from Schenectady High, or from the City of Schenectady, young people, and so, it's really, it's really interesting, when he, young youths who maybe not, would not come to school for, you know, various reasons, this was one of the reasons they came to school, but they also had to meet their academic obligations as well, so, I'd be really glad to have a resolution recognize him and the work he's done.
I'll move it. Yep, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, jazz appreciation month.
Yep, April is jazz appreciation month nationally, so, just be nice to recognize some really supportive, we only have a place for jazz, which is a great nonprofit here in the city, that has really very nationally known artists come to the Unitarian Church, so, just a shout out to our jazz folks.
I'll move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, do you want this affirmative action? Now, um, just her, check, Ms. Pumlin, you were going to be supplying information with that one?
Ms. Pellethico came down, do you have the legislation? Yeah, I sent the court's office a call to be able to say, I can make all the changes. What I wanna find out from you is, the information I had before was decreasing a couple of the spots, and then it was a discussion, I guess, I mean, it wasn't act, that some of them would be one to two representatives from certain groups, what's after you're looking for?
I can, well, we can talk about it, originally, when we, when we talked about this legislation, there was some concern that we would not be able to get, we wouldn't get enough people that want to be on board, so, in consideration of that, the affirmative action manager had suggested that we go down from nine, which is in the original legislation, to seven, and have, if we did that, then we'd have to put, which, there was a group, there was one category, which was women, we checked two, and also minorities, we checked two, and we'd have to go down to one, but what we agreed upon was that we'd say seven to nine, and then one to two in those specific categories. Well, since that discussion, we've had a number of people who have sent in resumes, the total number actually ended up being 23, so, I, I guess my question at this point is, do we need to now reduce that number in any way, since we have more than twice as many people who, who are interested in survey, do we stay with that, or do we change that legislation, mess with the discussion at this point? Ms. Prazzo?
I think we've started the process, and it's not about where we are right now, it's about where we're going to, so, if the board ever does, you know, have a decline, I would hate to see the board go inactive, because it fell below nine, because that was like a hard number, and the way I see it now is, it can successfully run as seven, or successfully run as nine, and I think it's awesome that that many people are, you know, interested, but I think it's kind of like a fail-safe method, and we're already here, so, my, my feeling is, we should go with it, it's not, certainly not harmful in any way to the board.
You're thinking seven, is that the number you're looking at?
No, seven to nine.
Oh, because we crossed the line, it's just seven.
Yeah, just, okay, that's why we're discussing it, we, we agreed at one point that it'd be seven to nine, and where it's one, where two members be one or two members, which would be women's interest and minorities' interest, and in addition to that, which this legislation hasn't removed, so we, we'll get the, we'll get the final one, the disabled, where we put that back in.
Disabled, it's supposed to be out.
In, and I'll give you the changes, and so that would take it down to two additional members.
Just to be upfront with you, I don't have any problem with having a variable amount of people on board, but I'll look into it, I just don't, we don't have any others like that, and if I find anything, I'll let you know, so I'll write it off like that.
Okay, all right. The other, the other question which Mr. Erickson raised was regarding having union members, whether or not that was something, there was language in there, I don't remember raising that question.
Yeah, I agree, there was discussion from some people, were concerned, I guess, that why would that be on it? It's like a non-affirmative action related, but I didn't know the connection, so...
And I asked, I sent an email asking that connection, and there was really no connection except the affirmative action manager did send back to say that she thought it was something, you should have all gotten that same email, you were all on it, that it was something that should remain, so, I didn't find any other language that I was looking at about that in there, because unions basically sort of do the same thing for their members, so I can understand why there's a question of whether it should be in there. They are not listed as one of the representatives, but just that they would be in there overall. So, does anybody else have questions or concerns regarding that? Okay, so, you know, we'll, just for those, you'll verify whether or not they can be in there. All right, the next part of the process would be actually appointing the people to be on the board, and so, because we have so many, there really needs to be some criteria in addition to this, because how do we decide, I mean, because there's several women, I mean, there's lots of women, there's lots of, I have minority persons, so we have to kind of come up with some, something to narrow down the number of people. One of the questions that I had, and I actually have over here, is whether or not we would be considering people who live outside the city, because we did get some folks who lived outside the city, so that's a question.
I have to finish, you get a good minute?
Twenty-three, I passed around, this is, what, what, I have, what I've done is, based on the categories that we have, women, minority, disabled, veteran, Latino, and then I put another one, city resident, because I thought that was something we'd be considering, so, based on looking at people's resumes, some things weren't obvious, so I couldn't put it in there. There were two people whose resumes were submitted by someone else, who, one person has moved out of state, and the other person is, I called them because they're related, and so I said, are you interested, and the answer was an absolute no, so I did not include them on this. Yes.
But just from what you said, my opinion, I guess if they live out of state, that'd make it tougher for them to attend meetings.
Yeah, probably so.
Maybe if you're considered regional people, right, and so, I can understand why you'd want people that live in the city, but it might make sense to have, you know, when you're talking about issues, have people from outside of the city, but more maybe from Albany or Rensselaer or something, or different town.
It's not that far off.
Right.
The resumes are in the county, I can tell you.
Right, so, but even if the language we had at some point in the future, and we said, you know, it might make sense to have somebody, a representative from a neighboring county participate, of course, we would, you know, whoever was nominating the people, but it makes sense that you might want somebody with knowledge from experience of some of community, certain Albany County, for example, who would be involved, that might be willing to participate.
I'm sure we'll pass this around here, one problem I see right off the bat, being quite honest with you, is I only see four folks who are non-minority people, and of those, only two are city residents. Every single other person is a minority listed, so I just see as a slight problem here that I've consumed with, obviously. Have we closed the deadlines for this, or is this completely closed off?
It's not closed off.
I mean, certainly the fair representation, I don't think that's a question in my mind, but that's just, again, just as a quick glance here. One, two, three, four, five.
Are not enough non-minorities?
You only, of the twenty-four, you only have two. I'm guessing they're Caucasian, I don't know what they are, I mean, I would assume, right? Only two of them are city residents.
Two of the twenty-four applications, I understand.
But we have boards that are almost the exact opposite.
If we're doing affirmative action, I think you've gotta have diversity both ways.
I think everything should be first off.
Absolutely, but two does not represent the board.
Well, we couldn't, we didn't say you can't apply, we sent it out, and this is, this was response.
Yeah, that's just, again, quick glance, that's why I haven't looked at resumes, but that's just a quick, very quick...
Well, I mean, I based it on what they said in their resumes, and some people, obviously, I think all of us know who they are.
Yes, oh, yes, yes, and some great names, there's no question, some very, very names in there.
And then there's one person, we don't know what her ethnicity is, it's not clear.
There's some very good people, there's something out about that. I'm sorry, Ms. King, I didn't share with you, my apologies. It's a little quiet over there, long trip.
You had a question, King?
No.
No, I passed over, I didn't give it to her, so...
So are you suggesting that we somehow solicit non-minorities?
Well, no, I, no, I don't know, I don't know what the answer is to this. Just something that I have a concern with, I really think we gotta take a look, again, the applications are closed, obviously, and we're looking for folks, but I think we need to have a fair, across the board, representation of all folks, to be on this, to serve on this board, and I just look at very...
Okay, there's nine people, okay, and...
I was just saying, I gotta take those two.
Four.
Well, I would certainly take one.
Four.
There's a question. Those names will become public anyway, so, but that's just one I would really see, again, just a concern I think I have.
Well, there's nine, and there's four non-minorities, so, but...
Yeah, yeah, and then two of them, and then two of them live in the city, though.
Oh, okay.
And then, only two live in the city, so if we're gonna make these city residents all mine...
But we haven't really decided that...
No, exactly, yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying. You've got some great names on there, though.
I think when we're ready to move forward with the selection process, my suggestion would be that we come up with some criteria, that we go through the resumes, we score them, and we bring the scores together and average them, and...
The mayor says...
Oh, are they your appointments?
Yes, they are.
Oh, I have yours, no.
Well, that's what you have.
Well, then I think we should double a big pile of resumes in the mayor's lap, and tell them to figure it out.
You score them.
You know, the mayor doesn't put some up there.
Again, I won't appoint city residents, and that's the way I would interpret it, unless the council made some other change, you know, like the golf courses advisory committee, which is a good way to reference these. I don't think I could appoint a non-resident.
Of the city, even if, not even the county, but the city.
That's what I'm saying, the other ones are not the city.
Yes.
Current president, too.
So, the mayor and I will work on this a lot, and work through it, so...
Very good.
Okay, so, that's where we are at this point.
Very good.
We'll do that, that discussion?
Yes.
All right, is there any more discussion on that?
For the purposes of a minute, will you be moving and taking the change to the ordinance?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, so... All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Mr. Howard's not here for the, okay, the, excuse me, Mr. Olson, are you on, going to be doing for the Sohim?
Yes.
He's on.
We bid for the pools. Coin Chemical provided us with no bid, Slack Chemical bid twenty-nine thousand eight hundred, and Surpass Chemical bid twenty thousand nine hundred and four dollars. Our recommendation is to award to Surpass for twenty thousand nine hundred and four dollars, this will come out of the two thousand fourteen operating budget, and there's enough money to pay for this.
On this question?
For our pools.
I'll move it.
Sorry. All those in favor? Okay, is there anything else to come before Health and Recreation? Mr. Erickson?
No, I just wanted to, you know, one of the things I asked to put on the account, on the agenda last minute, and then it turns out it got resolved before I even sent my email.
Okay.
This weekend, there's a mountain biking event, and since I've been in the council, there's a group of people who live in the area who can hold these mountain biking events in the woods over by Central Park, and it's grown, so this weekend, they're having actually a pretty big event, that is gonna attract twelve to fourteen schools with, from kids from all over New York State, along with their family and friends, and they're expecting about five hundred people, so, should be quite a big event, Health and Recreation spirited, and so I think it's great that actually there was, it had to do with security and this road opening closures and things like that, and so, mayor and staff resolved it, but I think before I even was able to respond to it, I'm leaving, so.
The issue with that, just to be clear, was, the application was a little bit unclear, if they had done everything on one side of Fair Avenue where they run the races and the trail is, we would have then had police officers just be there to get people back and forth across the street. If they were actually doing the race across Fair Avenue, then the street had to be closed, and it was some question as to whether they were, in fact, to have it all on one side or bring someone across the street, so, what's actually happened is they have, some of these are timed races, and some of the timing station, there should be a cross Fair Avenue, so Fair Avenue will now be closed.
It's resolved.
Yes, and that was the issue of, whether you close the street, whether you don't close the street, they wanted it closed, some scenarios, it didn't need to be closed, everybody would have a fine time.
Anything else to come before Health and Recreation?
That was good, I brought up just to kind of bring notes to it, thank everybody in the staff.
It was kind of secret.
Yeah.
The first I heard was when Joel Lazzieri called me the other day and said it was a problem there, but then it was resolved, so...
Quick results.
I'll make that be closer.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned. One of the two, you want to chair?
I'll call for a public safety, we're calling for a public hearing at parking meters, revision of chapter two forty-eight. Mr. Polster.
This is just a really quick change, because in our code right now, it has some language about how close the parking meters have to be to the certain parking space, we put our parking kiosks in, we want that to be all reading clearly, and so it'll still work with our kiosks, so it'll just be a minor change with that, nothing groundbreaking.
Good.
Sounds good to me, so, motion.
Do you want to move on this?
I'll move it.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Other business to come before public safety this evening?
Motion adjourned.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
You've done a good job, Lucy. Before we go on the executive session, I know our claims meetings have been kind of lengthy at night, I don't know if it'll be that way tonight, but I would just like everybody's consideration, I know everybody gets a little antsy here at the end, but there's questions to be asked, and I'm not gonna shut anybody off answering or asking questions, and I just like everybody's consideration, we can't even adjourn the meetings after that, everybody's already up and moving, and there's all kinds of commotion, so please just give the consideration we give to the other committees so we can finish the meeting in an orderly fashion.
I don't think we had that problem, Mr. E.
What's that?
We did not have a problem, we didn't want to be here to, you have the claims committee.
I'm just making a statement.
Well, I understand what you're saying, but we don't want to leave, we're all here